We ready? All right, we're going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on Monday, February 5th, 2018 at 7:05. We have a 7:15 meeting with the School Regionalization Study Committee and a 7:45 appointment with the Energy Committee. But until 7:15, we'll jump into some of our normal business. Okay, first, the approval of minutes for January 29th, 2018, open session, all three present. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions?
I had just a typo that I can just give to Mary.
Okay.
Just cross some words off because you were two sets.
There you go. Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next order of business is to issue a letter of thanks to Melinda Rowlands. Melinda has been the person who has raised and lowered the flag for how many years now?
I'm not sure, but since her father's passing.
Yeah. Yeah, so a decade or so, right?
Yeah.
So a letter of appreciation for those efforts. She's moved on to Georgia.
Oh, well, I make a motion to sign the letter of thanks.
Second.
Yep, and I would note that her father did it before her, so this has been a Miller family tradition for a long, long time. All right, who in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is a payment from the funds available for the 1870 Town Hall to Ann and Ellie Construction, the amount of $74,086. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Is this our last payment?
No.
Not quite.
Not quite.
Okay.
And then, as an update, as I think you know, we talked about it, we finally found the treasure map for the Septic System on Central Street across from the cemetery. I have not heard from National Grid. I sent them another reminder today, so. Anyway, on this one, a motion to approve was made?
Yep.
Second. If there are no further comments or questions, we'll take a vote. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is, the next is a one-day alcoholic beverages-serving license. It is taken out in the name of John E. Hogan on behalf of the Berlin Food pantry. It's an event, Chili Cook-Off, and there will be a beer tasting sponsored and brought by Neshoba Valley Winery, their beer operation, and that is at 6:00 PM on March 4th, 2018. I reviewed the application. Neshoba Valley is an approved supplier of the alcohol, so I take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I don't believe that we have any budgets that we're not holding at this point for one reason or another, correct?
Well, there's nothing that's ready. Council on Aging is being held.
Yeah.
The Tax Collector is being held.
Yeah.
And we're waiting for the place to fire sickness and accident.
Yeah.
The treasurer actually went through.
Okay.
Dennis has put that through separately.
Yes, separately, yeah, okay.
So kind of a holding pattern.
So everything is a holding pattern there. Well, we have a couple of minutes, maybe we could just get it out of the way because it's related. The Tax Collector, you know, made a request that we consult with council to confirm our understanding of the operation of the Mass General Laws that we enacted to combine the treasurer and the collector. I circulated today a proposed request for council, and I don't know if there are any comments or questions on that, but I really just laid out our understanding and quoted the section of the Mass General Laws. We will also attach Richard's inquiry so that they know what the inquiry is, so.
And this has been told to Richard, and we're just waiting for the answer?
Well, Richard requested that we review this with council.
Right.
I prepared.
Right, I'm just saying, he knows that you've done this, so that...
No, because we haven't done it until we vote. I wanted to be sure.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, no, he requested it. I put together the requests and attaching his questions.
Okay.
And then we're voting on that tonight, and then we can tell Richard, provided that we vote to do it.
Okay.
Okay? A motion to seek legal counsel on that point?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think we're close enough to 7:15 to start. There's people from the Regional School Committee, Study Committee, want to come up. Before we do that, do you have a, sorry, one last thing. Do you have a question or comment?
I essentially had to review.
Yes, I actually haven't had a chance to review it yet.
Okay.
I will review it this week. We had, I had quite a number of things that I was reviewing this week, so.
I figured you'd visit, but I guess one of the next week, nothing happens.
Oh, no, no, and I'll take a quick look at it. I'm sure it's probably fine, I just, yeah.
Can we get a chance to appreciate?
Yes, it will be this week, sorry.
So I think to start, maybe we should introduce ourselves.
Yes, I think that would be good.
Would that be a good plan?
Yeah.
You want me to start?
Cliff, would you like to start?
Cliff Laporte, Berlin School Committee and chairperson currently of the Regional School Committee.
And I'm Lori Martiska. I'm a member of the Boylston School Committee and a member of the Berlin-Boylston School Committee, and also I chair the Regionalization Exploratory Committee.
Okay. I'm Bob Conry. I'm the Director of Financial Services for the Berlin-Boylston Public Schools.
Okay. And I'm Joe Zangatta, Superintendent.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And I presume you know I'm Tom Andrew.
Chris Keen.
Lisa, who I saw.
All right.
So the last time we gave an update, we gave an update recently to the Boylston Select Board, and I think some of the feedback we got was, we talked too long.
Really?
So this is a learning environment.
So we have a 7:45, so.
So we're going to try to speed it up. As you, I think, probably are aware, a subcommittee was formed by the school district, by the school committee, to explore the implications, the desirability, the feasibility of uniting the communities.
That we know.
Okay.
So where are we now?
So where we are right now is that we are preparing to submit town warrant articles. We've shared newsletters with the community. We have another one coming out shortly. We've held public, one public forum in each community, and we plan more in April. And the town votes, as you know, would take place in May, on the same day, probably. If it were to pass, there would be in place a transitional school committee until November of 2020, which sounds really far away. The financial structure actually begins a year after the vote, so the financial structure would be in place July 1, but...
2019.
Correct. Because of...
For fiscal year 20.
Right.
Okay.
And because of the nature of our recommendations around governance, the election of school committee members would move to biennial November elections, which we'll talk very briefly about after. So the overall overarching goal, as you know, because this has come up before you before, it's come up, I think somebody said it comes up about every 10 years or something, it's on some kind of a cycle, to have this kind of conversation. And often the conversation revolves around efficiency and the fact that there are, there's a lot of dysfunction in having actually four districts, if you include the union, for the superintendency. What we found as we went through this process and as we talked to people, first of all, people don't really care that much about the efficiency of it, and I think Jeff put it kind of funny. He said to me, "I don't think people care if we have to work harder," but what people really care about are the, what's the impact on students? What is the impact of our current structure, and what would be the impact of a regional system on student achievement, student supports? We had presentations from the principals of each of the elementary schools, and there was a lot of conversation in looking at data that they shared with us about the fact that the school's performance, they were not necessarily compatible in all areas, and the conversation really led to the question.
You mean the Berlin?
Berlin Elementary and Boylston Elementary. And an example was, there was one particular area where scores were quite different, and the discussion was around the fact that one school curriculum focuses more attention on writing than the other. And so the question was asked, if we truly had a unified, consistent curriculum, would that have made a difference? And the response was, this is again, this person who's reporting this is saying yes, that they believed it would.
If presumably the unified curriculum had the additional attention, if the unified curriculum went the other way, I don't see how that claim could be supported.
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, okay.
The other, maybe a big topic and a big issue is also around the fact that student supports are not consistent throughout a student's time in the district. And we have a parent on the subcommittee who shared her own personal story, and in fact told us this was why she joined the committee, that her child was being supported, he had some special needs, and he was being supported in a certain way up through the elementary school, but then he was going to be transitioning into the regional district, and it was going to be a different set of supports, and not, she would rather have had the consistency of one set of supports that would take a student throughout their time in the district. We also have certainly, I think people can remember stories and concerns about teachers who needed to split their time, or it was desirable for them to split their time, and there was not a structure that really was favorable to do that because of the fact that if it was split equally, then the teacher wasn't going to receive benefits from either of the districts. Some of the, so the overarching goal really is to look at this from a perspective of achieving educational and support benefits for students. There were a number of key questions, and then our attempt at identifying resolutions. Every time we talked about regionalization in various groups, people raised questions, and we tried to compile those into a spreadsheet and sort of try systematically to try to answer those questions and concerns where we could. Certainly, an important area to all of us was, how would this impact on teachers? The, so just summarizing some of the key facts are that the teachers, in fact, will decide which union will represent them. They will vote to decide that. No teacher can go backwards salary-wise by law. The current contracts that are in effect as of July 1, 2018 will remain in effect through June 30, 2019. Salaries eventually will be...
And those are, that's when they expire by their terms? Is that right?
No, that, they will be amended.
Okay, yes.
To a single agreement.
Okay.
Salaries will be aligned onto one salary scale. That does not have to happen all in one year. It could potentially be phased in over several years. And Berlin teachers currently employed as of the start of the expanded district, which would be July 1, 2019, would gain retiree health benefits. Boylston teachers will actually experience a slightly reduced health insurance cost, and there may be obviously some adjustments.
Why is that?
The plan, do you want to explain that? Why Boylston teachers would pay less?
The percent share that we pay is 75%. The town pays 63%. Our rates are a little bit less as well.
I'm sorry, I don't know what the "we" meant there.
I'm sorry, the region, so if it was, the region's rates are slightly less than the town's rates.
Okay, that's the 63%, is the region's rate?
That's the share, that's the region's, okay, no, the actual healthcare cost, we're talking about first. The region's, the region's cost is slightly less than the town's cost.
Okay.
And then the portion that the region pays is 75%. The portion that the town pays is 63%. So the employees will have 12% more of their healthcare costs paid for by their employer.
Okay. And we in Berlin pay?
75% also.
75%, so there's no change to that?
That's correct.
Okay, that explains, okay.
One issue that has additionally come up, and we don't have the answers to this, and it may really depend on the individual community and how this impacts. The question has been raised, what's the impact of pulling those teachers out of your municipal health insurance? And I believe that one of your town officials has been exploring that and had some insight.
Okay. That would be the treasurer?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Is it Dennis? That's, yes. What we heard in Boylston is there's sort of pros and cons in the sense that it is, I think it's removing, what did we say, 16 or so people from the municipal...
Reduces the pool.
Right, but the experience level is such that they may actually experience reduced costs by having that group out of the municipal pool, so. And a very important issue, and I think in some way maybe the overriding issue for a lot of people in both communities, is the issue of local control. And we spent quite a bit of time in our group exploring, what does that mean? What is local control? What's important to you? And what we heard were two things. One, people were worried that we were going to close one of the schools and consolidate to one school in one of the communities. And secondly, there was the strong expression of, we want to be able to control our budget. We want to be able to control the investment that we're making in the education of our elementary students. The issue of school in each community, everyone on the group, and certainly the leadership of the schools, are on the same page that there is no interest and no desire to close a school. It doesn't make any sense to transport young people, especially the distances that would be involved from Berlin to Boylston, or vice versa. So we will be including language in the amendment that guarantees that each community will have an elementary school. The second issue is an interesting one. There was a feasibility study done several years ago that indicated there would be a very significant impact on one community versus the other financially if we were to fully regionalize and use what's called the statutory method of allocation of cost. As a result of that, we've been very interested during the time that we've been focusing on this to explore alternatives. Are there other ways that you can allocate costs? And we had the great fortune to have our attorney, Russell Dupre, who is a member of this committee. He works with school districts throughout the state, and he happened to be working with one who had very similar concerns. It was several communities coming together, but really wanting that local control, and that's Mount Greylock. And so he worked with them, and they came up with an alternate method of allocation that was approved by DESE, and the towns voted to approve the regional amendment. So that model, and Bob is going to talk a little bit in a minute about what that looks like, and it's on the second page of your handout as well. The net result of this is that it does provide each community the opportunity to have a say in control in their elementary school budget. The regional budget, the regional school at the middle to high school would continue to use the same allocation method that's currently being utilized, which is based on the proportion of students from each community. This method actually gives us the opportunity to enjoy some of the benefits of regionalization, but to also maintain the opportunity for each community to have that local control. There are some details around this that are going to need to be fine-tuned around, because one of our goals is to share resources across the schools, and if you do that, what's the implication on this model? So there are some things like that. What we did do, though, a question was asked about special education costs, if you, you know, could you move money around? And Desi's response was, from their point of view, it's all one budget. So the answer is yes, you have the flexibility, you need to, but you would have to work it out with each community as to what that would look like. Governance, I alluded earlier to the fact that we will now, we would now be electing school committee members on the national election cycle, biennial, beginning in November of, and the first election would occur in November 2020. We actually looked at, there are about six permitted structures for governance of a regional school committee. We looked at all of them, we considered them, and the option the subcommittee chose gives both communities an equal number of school committee representatives, as we have now, and gives all six equal votes. There's no waiting of votes. We understand that there are some slight population differences between the two communities, but the school committee felt, and the subcommittee felt very strongly that the system that's, that we're using right now is working very well. There's a collaborative collegial kind of relationship, and that's what we want to maintain going forward. So we really wanted equal representation from both communities. What will be slightly different is that a school committee member has, there's a residential requirement, a residence requirement, so if we say the number is six, three have to be from Berlin, three have to be from Boylston, but they are elected by both communities.
Yep, we understand that.
Okay.
Process, yep.
Great. And the last point, before Bob just briefly goes to the financial. Did I talk too much already?
Good job.
Just checking. The last thing is, there are, there's no question that there are efficiencies that could be gained by regionalization. Probably the most important thing about those efficiencies is the fact that what people could be doing if they were not doing these tasks, for example, if the superintendent is not negotiating three different teacher contracts, which takes a fair amount of time, what would he be doing? He would be maybe in the, well, do you want to say, Jeff? What would you be doing? Having coffee?
Meeting with the selectmen. There you go.
Yeah, I'd probably be doing more things that had to do with teaching and learning.
Mm-hmm.
Such as?
Being in the classroom, working on curriculum issues, doing more things with central office in terms of, you know, developing a five-year plan, which we're going to do anyway, but I could spend more time on that stuff. I like to be in the classrooms, spend a lot more time on that.
Okay. So Bob?
So I was asked to provide an analysis, a summary of the impact of regionalization, and before I dive into it, to the details, I'll just say that the overall impact, forgetting the impact to each town, the overall impact was very similar to the analysis done by a consulting firm a couple of years ago. Their analysis assumed that we would apportion costs by something called the statutory method, which is based on enrollment, because the, so essentially, we take the two, the cost of both schools and just divide it by the relative enrollment. That would result in a lot of the costs shifting to, from one town to the other, which might sound good to the town that's going to pay less, but at the same time, if they're concerned about local control and money going into their school, that would create pressure, kind of logically, for the town that's paying more to expect more of the resources to go there. So it felt like when we talked about this as a group, statutory method was kind of a non-starter for both towns, and that's why we looked at the, we looked into alternative methods. So the overall impact, I've summarized at the school level, is slight decline to, I'll just comment on the impacts to Berlin. Is a slight decline of about $31,000 to Berlin, and that's for Berlin Memorial, and for the regional high school, an increase of $17,000. And what that's comprised of is a few factors which are outlined below. The first is a decline in the costs of the health benefits for employees. We have a plan that is significantly less expensive than the town's plan. We pay the same 75%, but the plan is significantly less expensive. On the other hand, that's offset by our, significantly offset by our payment for health benefits for retirees. I've included that cost in the analysis, the cost for health benefits for retirees. It showed it as $43,000. In actuality, if we went and regionalized on day one, there would be no cost for retirees. We'd be just responsible for the ones that retired within our school district. What I've attempted to do with that 43 is to get to what the steady-state cost is if we had been a regional, region for about 20 years, so you can really see what the impact is. You wouldn't actually feel that cost until later.
And did you get a response from Russell about people that have retired already that might come out of the woodwork when you regionalize and offer it to Berlin teachers?
He did offer a legal opinion, and you know what? I'll have to pull it out and send it to you. I'll have to pull it out and send it to you, Chris. My recollection is that he shared like a draft of what the policy would look like. And one of the factors was that they had to be, they had to qualify as a retiree, which means through, because I know there was a question about.
Something like that. But if they did qualify, I just wondered if that cost would hit us since we don't offer it.
My understanding is it would not. The region, those are not, the people who retired already were never employees of the region, and they therefore would not be eligible for regional retirement benefits.
Okay.
I can confirm that. I'll check the email.
I knew that he was going to confirm it.
Right.
And I missed the last meeting, so I didn't know whether he gave the update then.
I believe he did. I can check.
We have another meeting coming up, the 13th.
Right.
What I'll do is bring copies of those legal opinions and the draft policy.
Okay.
But that's my recollection too, because it's, the language stated that for employees as of the time the full regional district is formed.
Right.
They would have to.
They're separate, they're separate employers.
It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean they won't come out of the woodwork though.
But they can come ask the town, and the town's going to say we don't have retirement benefits.
Right.
That's essentially, and we would say they're not eligible.
Okay.
Okay. Just a question about the way that the retirement health benefits are, are they reserved against or are they expended, you know, on a sort of pay-as-you-go basis every year?
Well, they're mostly pay-as-you-go, but we've, we've implemented a, we've started funding at a very modest level in OPEB trust for post-employment benefits. But it's got a long, it's going to require some funding over a longer time period. It's, if there's some other kind of very wealthy towns that have kind of been able to bite it off and put some big chunks in, we're probably, where many of the districts are having just implemented this in the last couple of years.
And is that $43,000 calculated on the basis of a steady state for funding something like that on an ongoing basis, or is that assuming no funding in that kind of reserve or a combination of the two?
What I, what I took there was I took our retiree costs for the region and said that based on the number of employees we have in Berlin relative to the region, if we were kind of at a steady state, that's, that's what that number is. So the region, the actual Tohoto budget's, say, maybe 120, and the number of employees that would be eligible in Berlin versus the region, that's how I came up with that number.
And is that figure a snapshot given current costs, or is that?
Yes.
Okay. So that is the amount that would be the case in a steady state if retirement health benefit costs remain steady at today's levels? Is that, I'm just trying to understand how that.
This is, this is, this is kind of a present value today, like if, if.
Okay.
It would be, what would we, what would be in the FY19?
What's your present value discount on that, do you know? If it's a, in other words, you're going to be expending this maybe 10 years from now, and you say this is a present value.
Okay. Maybe I shouldn't have expressed it that way.
All right, sorry.
It's.
And we could talk, I mean.
Yeah.
I don't expect, but this, I think, is going to be an issue because it's, it's a significant, it could be a significant cost. And so I think we need to, you know, sort of put a pin, you know, through that, that cost and really be able to defend how we arrive at an estimated cost when the time comes.
Sure.
And we don't want to belabor it tonight, but I think that's, retirement health benefits is something that's come up for a vote a few times in Berlin and have, you know, it has been rejected. So that's, it's, you know, it's a point that needs to be addressed.
Okay. The, there's some reductions as well. There's, regional transportation is something that the State Department of Elementary and Secretary Ed will provide to schools that are regionalized. We receive regional transportation aid for Tohoto right now. If the elementary schools are regionalized, we'd receive a little bit over $32,000 for Berlin.
That's a percentage of the cost of busing, correct?
It is. It's.
What did you use? Do you remember?
65%. They are supposed to cover for 100%.
Right.
They don't.
It's been variable, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's very low.
Yeah, it was 73% last year.
Right.
It's dipped down below 70% a few years ago, but it's been in this low 70s the last couple of years.
And so you, what, you use a figure in the low 70% to calculate these?
I used between 70 and 72.
Okay.
Off the top of my head. And the other thing is it's based on, it's not your full transportation cost. They, they, so it is 75% and it's based on the number of students within a certain radius as well. So anyways, so that is aid that the town would receive that it's not currently receiving. It'll also receive bonus aid, which does phase out over time. For each grade that's regionalized is a certain amount of additional aid that you receive on an annual basis. And that's $8,000. Offsetting that, there's a couple of grants that Berlin Memorial and Tohoto wouldn't receive. It's the Rural Schools Grant. In order to receive the Rural Schools Grant, all of the schools in a district need to be rural, classified as rural, and Boylston Elementary is not classified as rural. It's in a slightly more populous area.
Sorry.
Yeah.
That happened not long ago too. During my tenure, I would imagine.
Yeah.
I don't know what happened, but.
That Boylston ceased to be rural.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And I, you know, I didn't think anything changed, but.
Yeah, sometimes it changes. And there's, I mean, there's kind of detailed classifications they have that classify it and how far they are to metropolis, what the population density is. And that's the part I understand, and I think it's more complicated than that, to be honest. So right now, that would be, this past year, about $25,000 is what Berlin received. Tohoto received a little bit over $48,000. The share attributable to Berlin is $17,280. So when you net all of that together, it results in a decline of just under $14,000.
I think the overriding message there is that you wouldn't choose to regionalize for financial gain or financial benefit, but on the other hand, based on this analysis, it's also neither community is going to take a huge hit, which is very different than the first analysis that we had looked at. The other thing is this is based on 2018, correct?
Right. This is restating the FY18 budget.
Yep.
Right. So when you actually look at budgets, you won't see, this is not meant to be a reflection of the next year's school budget. That's probably obvious.
Yeah, so this is really a snapshot if we were doing this now.
Yeah, just as a way, and he only presented things that actually would change or be affected. There's obviously other elements to the budget that are not reflected here because they weren't going to be substantially different.
What about the cost of negotiating legal counsel, all of the costs of getting to They could be in the following budget, FY20?
So, for example, I mean, so the, the legal cost would be, we have a, we pay, we don't have a variable rate, we have a fixed contract, so we wouldn't pay anything more from a legal perspective.
Even with negotiating the three teacher contracts into one?
Nope. I don't want him to hear that. That's, I don't want him to think that he can, but no, that's, that's part of his job, and he would be negotiating three anyways. His job will be easier because he'll be negotiating one contract instead of three. So that's considered part of the services that we receive with our current attorney.
This is in addition to the budget since I was on school committee, having legal counsel on.
On a retainer.
Yeah.
This, this has been.
He's been on a retainer, for sure.
It has been, in my opinion, an incredible advantage.
That's why I wondered why he was at every meeting.
That's exactly why it's such an advantage for us, is he'll call and he'll say, do you need me to come to this meeting? Yeah, we do. Okay. And we know as a community and as a district, there's no additional cost. So that was a very positive change.
I've talked to peers and who have it differently, and there's two disadvantages to the other method, which is one, they, they're paying a little bit, well, substantially higher kind of, I guess, retail rate. We get, and the other thing is we get a predictable rate. We could have legal or personnel or contractual, you know, vendor contract issues happen in one year, have a significant number, and not so many the next, and that's really hard to kind of put into a budget and.
Right.
Absorb. So I think this is the only arrangement I've seen working in a school district that seems to work pretty well for us, I think. I'm guessing you pay for services because you're writing a memo.
Well, we, we use our services.
Well, there you go.
What other questions?
I guess the question I would have is when people come to you and say, this is cyclical, this comes around every 10 years, I voted against this 10 years ago, what would your answer be? Why would I do this now when I voted against it 10 years ago?
And I think there's maybe two answers to that. One is the fact that why would we keep coming back? Why do we keep bringing this up every so many years? Because clearly it's in the belief of the district that it is the right thing for students and it, it has positive implications. What I think, what I hope, I guess, is that one of the overriding barriers in the past has been this concern about local control and this desire to not give that up. And that's completely understandable. I feel like we've done the best we can to offer an option that does not require that either community relinquish that local control. And to me, that's very different than maybe what's been brought up in other, other go rounds on this issue.
I think you're going to have to go into how this local control works too.
Yeah, people are going to have to.
If you're just going to say, if you're just going to say, this helps with local control, that's not enough. I mean, I don't even totally understand. It's just not enough detail.
Okay.
But returning to your response, were there other points?
Those were the two.
I just, I just had a couple of.
Oh, sure.
Comments. You talked about the transitional support that a certain child needed when he went from the elementary to Tohoto. You talked about curriculum alignment. These things don't just happen when we vote to regionalize. You have to do the work. So you have to do the work whether you regionalize or not, correct? It's not just going to happen.
No, it's not going to happen by magic, but you're going to have structures that support that. You're going to have people coming together as a part of the day-to-day course of, of teaching and learning and.
That can happen the way it is.
It, they, and to be honest, I think.
It might be easier the other way, but it can happen.
And I think the principals have, and the prior superintendent, I think they worked really hard to do that to the best of their ability. I think there are limitations because of the structure and because of the, the way that some of those special supports are financed as well.
Then again, it's the detail, the detail of, you know, saying, regionalization, you know, we'll have our curriculums aligned. You have to be more specific in explaining how that could make it easier. See what I'm saying?
May I? I'm not, excuse me, I'm not a member of the subcommittee, so, but I would like to say something.
Please.
I think that the way we are currently structured, it looks like it should be easier to align curriculum, for example. I'll use that as one example. But don't forget, there's a, there's a long tradition of these two elementary communities in these two towns being independent. They have two different teachers' unions. They have two different sets of voters that they have to comply, you know, they have to deal with. There's a sense that there's too little school systems.
There are.
Well, that's the point. And there's a sense of entitlement to not to have to go along because we are, we're Berlin or we're Boylston. And it's, it's a cultural, it's a cultural piece.
I think a lot of people do like that.
But when you, my other view is this. All of our students are Tohoto students. And they should be Tohoto students from the moment they enter school. That's, because that's the system we are. And I understand there are concerns. I think the committee's done a great job, but I'm responding to your question about, you should be able to achieve those unification goals without unifying the towns. And possibly you can?
I think you've done a great job too.
But that's too.
I think you've tried.
I would say so as well. I think there's been a lot of good work done.
The presentation that the three principals gave to us at the subcommittee meeting, they pretty much said you can't tell difference between Berlin and Boylston kids when they get to Tohoto now. And so it sounds like they are doing a good job.
May I just interject here? I'd like to suggest, I don't want to sort of debate the questions tonight. What I, what I would like to do is to suggest to you on the basis of what we've heard generally and what we've heard tonight, the things that we feel that would be helpful for you to address.
Yes.
Going forward. And there, I think your point was.
Yes.
We need, you know, we, I think it will be very beneficial to this project to say that these are the aspects of continuity and coordination that will be positively affected. And these will be the structural impediments to that that will be addressed and will go away. And, you know, these are the benefits that, you know, that we resolve. So, you know, a very, you know, orderly thing that identifies those.
Very nicely said.
So, you know, and, and I think, you know, the questions you have, I think, and it's good for you to hear these because it's not the last time you're going to hear these things, you know?
That's right. I think these are the.
But, but I think for, for purposes of tonight, I would suggest that, that, you know, you, you need to have a good structure and documented, you know, so you can say, we say this because of this. We say this because of that, et cetera. That's one. I think two, again, and you said this as well, in terms of detail, what I'm hearing tonight is that we, on the one hand, have a methodology that will equalize financial impacts and will continue to foster local control. But I'm hearing, on the one hand, at this very high level, that this proposal will, you know, will foster, you know, continue to foster local control, but I'm hearing on the other hand, that local control is a problem. So, you know, I think your presentation has to somehow address that, you know, how you're going to address the negatives of local control and how you're going to maintain local control. And it seems to me how those measures that you take to maintain local control, how are those not going to create the same problems of disparity? I mean, you know, I think those are, those are some of the questions that, that you need to answer because, you know, truly at this level, I'm a little confused as to, you know, how you have your cake and eat it too. You know, that you can maintain local control but address all the disparity issues of maintaining local control.
I think one of the big differences is that local control, the focus here is really around the investments you want to make, the budgetary side of it. When we look at regionalization, we're talking about educational continuity and curriculum alignment, which is very different than budgetary. So.
And that's fine. All I'm saying is, in your description, I hear, you know, one thing and the other, and it sounds a little bit like, you know, I can have my cake and eat it too, you know? And so as, I think as you, you know, as you develop your presentations to say, yes, it establishes local control for a budget, but it avoids then those continuity issues because if you. because it unifies. And that, that's a very good answer, but I have to say, it wasn't, that answer wasn't apparent to me, you know, earlier.
That's a very helpful point. Thank you.
I know that we're beyond our 7:45, but this is an important topic, and there are a number of people here, and I want to be sure that there's nobody here who has a question or comment that they want to make from the four. Do you have anything else to say?
Just, I think, it's very valuable to me. I'd really like, it seems like both principals and the superintendent are in favor of this. I would like to hear from them specifically why they feel that it's important that we do this.
Okay.
Especially when I've heard that, that they both, they all feel that we're doing a relatively good job now. I would really like to hear why, why we would want to go in this direction when things appear to be under control.
And anybody from the four who has a question or comment? Okay. Anything else that you, any questions you have of us or any further comments that you have tonight?
I want to thank you for your time.
And thank you for the input and suggestions.
And I want to thank you for yours. We were going to be here anyway, so.
If you did have, if there was a warrant on the, pretending what would the deadline be for that?
To get your warrant in?
Yeah.
Next Monday.
Yeah. For regionalization?
February 12th. Our warrant is open right now.
So you should at least get a placeholder in.
Okay.
We can, we will have a little time to play with it later if you need to, but something that's in as good a shape as you can have it.
Sounds like a returnee or retainer will be busy.
There you go. And again, it won't be cast in stone on February 12th, but to get something in, so there's a placeholder, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All righty, thank you.
Jeff, what's that doing?
It does. I forgot.
No, I was worried.
I was talking to the glass. It's very bad because I wouldn't. I don't know if that's what it tells.
If you want them, I can go grab them.
If, well, I'll tell you what, if they're down the hall anyway, why don't we, are they waiting for us?
They want me to grab them when you're ready.
That's right. If they, what I was getting at is, did they have other business that they were doing or no?
Didn't really signal.
Okay. Then have them, tell them we're ready to come down.
Yeah.
I was going to say, if they were doing something else, we could do the last couple of little things, but we don't know that, so.
Yeah, we're almost done, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How's it going, Lynn?
It's good. I have a question for you after, but it's not on study track.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think, once we finish this, do you want to step out in the hall for a moment while we're waiting for them to come down?
Sure.
Okay.
A little pause.
Sure.
Yeah, pause from all.
You missed the Olympics. Came all the way back from Korea.
Yeah, came back before they started.
Yeah. All right. All right, I think we're here about Guardian Energy, is that right?
We are in contract review.
Okay. Yeah, I took a look at the contracts, and there isn't much to them in terms of the issues, but I hadn't, I hadn't gone through them, so I didn't know that. It's, it seems to me that the contracts say that they will submit an invoice on the completion of the project, period. That's really the only relevant thing in the whole contract. Yeah, I forgot about, I have to say, I forgot about doing these because originally I thought we were going to do it next Monday, so it had gotten, put in the next week pile. And I remembered this at about 5 o'clock this afternoon. I thought, damn it, I looked at it, I thought, well, this isn't taking very long, anyway. So it's, and in addition to that, there really isn't any particular formalities about us accepting or testing or anything else, you know? I mean, it just, so nonetheless, it seems to me that that puts us in the position that, and this is the position I would take with them, that their submission of the invoice was a representation and warranty that, that the work had been completed in accordance with the scope and the specifications. And any submission of an invoice before that is a breach of that implicit warranty. And we should be, we should be entitled to, you know, recover costs and damages or in the event that they can't cure the performance that isn't in accordance with, with scope and specification. So that would be, that would be my position. And if we have to do a formal letter on it, I, you know, I can help with that, but I think, you know, looking at that very slender threat that we have in the contract, that, that would be the way that I would interpret it. And, I mean, having said that, we're not aware of anybody accepting or signing off on these in other documentation, because that would be, you know, an obvious fly in the ointment in that, in that approach. And I didn't see anything in, you know, in the stuff that I got.
Well, there have been funds transferred.
I know, we, we transferred the funds, yes.
Okay.
But again, my argument would be, we transferred the funds based on the implicit warranty that the, it was complete.
That they did what they set.
Yeah, exactly, in terms of scope and specification, yes.
Yeah.
So that would be, that'd be my, you know...
And we have lots of documentation of them saying, "You're right, we haven't done it."
Yes.
Yeah.
Lots of, lots of...
Admission of guilt, essentially.
Yeah. No, and I think, you know, that, it's not much in the contract, but it actually, you know, it's pretty strong under the circumstances, the way it's written, so. So anyway, where are we with them? Are they, do we have any sense that they will work to cure this?
So their current cure proposal falls short of what they sold us, which is why we're not happy with that and escalating.
Okay.
So their current cure is that they will have an individual review the data on their own and provide us with their own personal opinion of what that data means, which is not at all what this analytics platform should be able to do.
Not unless they have them in a little box downstairs that you can push the button on, but...
No, I mean, when you read some of the language in the expectations that they set, you know, it's full automation, you know, almost like AI level, where this system looks at all the data and says, "Bing, I know that this blower is running overtime for X, Y, and Z reason, fix it." You know, it's, it's basically a proactive approach instead of somebody, somebody's opinion once a month.
Right.
So it's completely different than what they sold.
Yep. Okay.
So what is the end result that we're looking for? Because my impression is that you're not even entirely sure they can do what they promised. So what is the end result that we're trying to get?
Well, if they could deliver what they sold, that would be great. That would be a good system. But to your point, there is concern that they can even do that. They admitted that the subcontractor that they chose was actually not capable of doing this at the time of the award, but is much closer to being able to do that now. But that still doesn't get us to the end game. So that's kind of...
Well, they give us our money back, and then we'll pay you when you've developed the capacities, you know?
Yes, and that's, you know, I think that is the end game.
That's your end game at this point.
Yeah. Where your proposal for remedy falls short of the contract, undo.
Yeah.
And...
Pay us back.
Pay us back until you're done.
Because you billed us before the work was done, and that was inappropriate, and shame on us for having paid you, but we need it back.
And then as soon as they show that they've met the contract, we can give it right back.
Absolutely. Okay. I think we can do that.
And is it also keeping you from applying for other grants?
It is.
Because we can't close out last year.
Right.
And we can't apply for any future grants until this is closed out, so it's really hampering us.
Yeah, and it could go on for a year, it could go on.
Right. And even if we get the money back, that condition will still exist.
Right. Exactly.
Unless we could then petition the state to, you know, while I'm asking you, could we petition the state to reverse that grant and say...
Never happen.
Never happen.
Now, I wonder, we could check to see whether an encumbrance of the grant money against their performance with kind of spending it. Eloise, I'm just thinking, you know?
I don't know.
I don't know either, but it's a question we could ask.
Is that a Kelly Brown question?
It might be. But we just want to find a way out of this jail that we found ourselves in because of their failure to perform and our inability to close out the, the grant monies because of that failure.
Yes, we're kind of stuck.
Yeah, you know, I hear you.
And have we brought Kelly Brown? I apologize, I've been a little AWOL lately. Have we, have we brought Kelly Brown into the inner circle?
She is aware of the situation.
Okay.
She knows what we're up against.
And she is.
Kelly Brown is our regional coordinator for the green communities for DOER, so...
Does Guardian have other contracts out for this? Usually people...
Well, as we've learned, this was their first building analytics contract. And since that time, we did have one person come to us and ask for a recommendation, which we failed, we chose not to, to give.
So they're not the beneficiary of any other grants that we know of?
No, but they're vetted by National Grid, so if we truly get unhappy, we can always complain to them.
Okay. Yes, and that's what I'm looking at in terms of...
They're on like an approved vendor list or fact track.
That's right.
Fast track preapproval.
That's right.
So that's why we sort of thought, okay, I thought I was safe.
Yeah, yeah. And perfectly reasonable assumption.
And they have done good work for the time.
Guardian has done good work.
Yes, they are, I think, very competent at the sort of weatherization tasks that they were given. And in my opinion, they moved beyond their area of...
If we terminated this contract and decided, I mean, because it could be conceivable that the amount of money, you know, for this contract, you know, just nobody, you know, maybe nobody could perform, is it possible for us to expend this on some other project and get out of jail? So in other words, if we just decide, I'm just trying to explore, you know, alternatives here.
I, I would propose that that would be a feasible alternative.
All right. So...
Although if it was grant money, doesn't it need to be spent on what the grant proposal was unless the state lets us?
But I think there's other suppliers that are capable of doing the same thing.
That's what we would have to do.
We would have to find an alternate supplier and say, "Hey, we have this grant money, and this is what we want to do."
Gotcha.
And where I was getting was, because again, I wasn't involved in the weeds on this, was the grant very specifically for this or was it for a number of things and we decided to spend it on this?
I believe this grant was specifically for building analytics.
Specifically for this, okay. That's where I was getting at, is the grant was a little more broad, like, you know...
It's not just energy cost.
That was a T L one. We were on the T L.
Retrofitting of three buildings, then, you know, that, what I was trying to get at was then maybe if this is an amount that, you know, nobody could do it for, we could decide, well, that we won't use it to do this, we'll use it to do something else that, that retrofits the building.
I think there's probably a scope of analytics that can be implemented with that money, even, you know, let's say, even if it wasn't to this degree.
Mm-hmm.
If we had another supplier that said, "Hey, we do the analytics all the time, but, you know, maybe it's implemented differently to meet the cost."
Okay. And we have not paid for the school yet?
Well, this, what we haven't paid for is the retro commissioning part now to your...
But we have paid for this.
Analytics.
Fifty-one thousand.
All right, all right. And how much are we paying, how much is the other amount?
Thirty-eight.
A pair of seventeens.
Yeah.
Seventeen, and how much is this amount? Apologies that I...
It was fifty-one.
Fifty-one thousand.
Yes. So we have seventeen, four fifty-nine, and seventeen, two thirty-three.
So we owe them thirty-eight on another project, and we paid them fifty-two on this. Okay. I'm just trying to understand where we are in terms of leverage, of who has what money and owes who what.
The concern we have is we're holding up work, payment for work that was done, and we have a harder time saying that that was not done to our satisfaction as this other work. And the question I have to you is, do we need to separate those two? Do we need to have some kind of exchange? Do we need to pay on those?
Well, I think they fall short on retro as well. And I think we can cite examples from retro.
Yeah, you know, well, what, I mean, I think certainly equitably, we are in a position where if we have paid fifty-two on their implicit warranty that this work has been done, and it is, it seems to me undeniable, it has not been anything like done, and, you know, we owe them, you know, an amount. I think to retain that is...
Reasonable.
Is reasonable, yeah. And, and, or to offset it, you know? So I think, I think what we need is sort of a demand letter at this point, and we want that money back.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we could, and let me think about this, we could agree as, you know, part of a current settlement that they could retain thirty-eight of the fifty-two and apply it against the other.
The retro portion.
Yeah, yeah, if we're satisfied with it.
If they're able to complete that.
If they're able to complete that. You know, I mean, we, we could say that, but that we are insisting upon the return of this because of the breach of the warranty. So I could put together better meetings.
I might suggest that we should try and get the total back first, you know?
Oh, absolutely. No, no, absolutely.
Yeah.
Of course.
Okay.
Yes.
Because they, you know, if they retain the thirty-four...
We're just, we're just going to ask, we're just going to ask, we're going to ask for it back. That will be the first.
Okay, who's going to ask? Greg or the selectmen?
I don't think we can.
We have your recommendation, okay? And if, and maybe we have this already, but if we don't, could we just have sort of a bullet point summary, not more than half a page, you know, three quarters, I don't know how, but half, three quarters of a page, whatever, of the failures to perform? If we get that, then I'll put a little wrapper around it about, you know, the violation of the warranty, and we'll make demand for a return of that less than until they can perform.
And our expectation is that would be this, under the select board's heading and signature.
Yes, because we're the, you're the party.
We're the advisory to you.
Yeah, and you're advising us by that model as to the specific things that haven't been done, because I don't have a clue about that unless you guys tell me.
Right on.
All right. Okay.
Okay, I think that's what we need from you tonight.
All righty. Excellent.
Anything, oh, do we, oh, as Eloise elbowed me, the discussion we had regarding the adder and how the municipal aggregation adder that we talked about back and forth regarding, how did we access these funds? What is the proper account for these funds?
Yes.
So we discussed this...
Did you see there was some emails that went back and forth?
Yes, we did. So we actually have a sample language.
Every time you talk about the adder, I think we're talking about some kind of snake system.
Me, too.
That's a big, a pointy teeth. So we'd like to run this by you.
The municipal adder, I'm thinking, where did we put it? I could use that.
Especially in our contract negotiations. So for a, a article, so we would be seeking two articles, the first of which had to do with the street lamps, which we would do as a not to exceed...
Well, this money is in general funds right now, correct?
It will be.
Yes.
Once it's accrued. Okay, so we have to go through the contract cycle as people pay their bills?
Yes.
That...
And it will go into general funds.
Correct, sir.
We, we have, and I think June, June actually raised the idea of a stabilization fund, which I think is probably, I mean, it is, it's always a possibility, but it requires a two-thirds...
It's overkill.
...vote. Vote, and it seems an overkill for this. Her second email did agree with me that there were two options, one of which was to put this in a budget line.
Yeah.
So you could, where you could tell, you know, and it's just in the budget.
But that expires June thirtieth, and I think I've untwisted them into a special article.
That's.
Yeah, and that's the point. Well, if you expect to expend something in a given fiscal year, then obviously, many, in many ways, the easiest thing to do is put that in the budget. Okay? If you don't spend it because this project takes longer, you can always put it in your budget the next year and you vote it again. And what you didn't expend in the first year just goes back into the general fund. So that's, you know, I'm untwisting their arm here, okay?
You're gonna sit around you.
June did say either way she was gonna track this.
Yeah, yeah, so she knows that we're spending money that's coming in from this source. This is how you expend it. So that's, I mean, that's the way it works if you put it in a budget.
So if we put it in the budget for twenty-two thousand dollars and we end up not spending it, then the next year we've got to go and ask for forty-four thousand dollars.
If we had a forty-four K project to do.
Yeah.
Right.
If, however, you had.
Which will be harder to get we the people to vote for because it's hard to remind them, by the way, we didn't spend it last year.
Well, I mean, you know, that's, it's possible. I don't know, does this aggregate year over year over year?
Well, each contract, we have the option of exercising this additional sum on top of there, which would continue to flow into the town. And at that point, if we don't spend it, we want to know where does the money go and how would it be made available for future projects?
Yeah, well, the best way to sequester it is, would be a special article then because then you vote it. Again, however, if you wanted, and that's absolutely fine. You put it in and you indicate that it is funded out of general funds. And part of your argument on the town meeting floor is these general funds are coming in from contract payments.
We've got to have a revolving account or something.
Well, June is checking on that, but I don't think it's an eligible purpose for a revolving account. I don't think she's a hundred percent nailed that duck's feet to the floor, but I think she's pretty certain of it.
Well, the other.
Some of them were, I went in and had a conversation with her about revolving funds and they're a nightmare. And they're very narrow.
We did ask two other towns, one of which was the city of Lowell, and neither one of them chose that route.
Yeah, I don't, again, I don't think it's a permissible one.
Does a special article get voted on then every year as a special article?
Only if you, for that year, that special article is voted. If you want another special article, then you have to submit another special article.
Here's the point, once you.
But it doesn't close out on June thirtieth.
It stays there.
I get that part, but let's say in year two, there's still the adder, all right?
But it's already been agreed that any money coming in from the adder goes to us.
No, no, with a special article, you have to appropriate a certain amount.
Yeah, that's a question.
So.
And they all remain open?
Yeah.
So the special article route requires an annual vote to keep that going?
No, no, no. If you've got twenty-two thousand dollars, let's say, that's coming in through the adder and you do a special article to fund street lamp, okay? Once that twenty-two thousand is there, that twenty-two thousand stays there until you either spend it or until we vote to retire the special article and the funds are returned to general funds, okay? But that doesn't help you, that's just spending twenty-two thousand dollars. If the next year you want twenty-two thousand dollars for further street lamps or whatever, you have to have a special article and that's treated the same way. The first special article is still there and will continue, but in order to spend the money in that second year, you need another special article.
So let's say we wanted to do a project that was two hundred thousand dollars and we wanted to roll ten years' worth of adder money. We would have ten different special articles. Could they be stuffed together to do one project?
No, you would do one a year.
Yeah, you'd have to do, I don't know anyway.
Because I assume the amounts would be different and you don't know what else is coming in.
No, I meant when it comes time to spend the money, I mean, you have article one, article two, article three, and they each have a different price tag associated with it.
Now, if you had four articles that had different, you know, adders for each year, so four years, they totaled up to, you know, two hundred thousand dollars, let's say. And they were all for purchase of streetlights, okay? Then you could purchase streetlights in that fourth year to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars. And as you expended money, you'd expend twenty-two thousand out of, you know, fiscal, you know, fiscal year nineteen and then you'd go to the next year and the next year and the next year. And that money would be sequestered and stayed there until, you know, if you were trying to build a critical mass, you know, that money would stay there until you either spent it or until, you know, the town voted to, you know, retire the general article and return the funds. So you'd end up with, you know, you'd end up with a bunch of envelopes, you know? That's a special article for this year, special article for this year, special article. And you could spend, you know, when it came time to expend it, you'd have to go into those envelopes and pull out the money.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. And again, budgeting is, you know, is less, if what you were doing was you're gonna be purchasing three streetlights a year and you knew that that corresponded to the adder for the given year and you were gonna do it on a rolling basis like that, that's the kind of thing that could fit within a budget because you know you're gonna do it, you know, in a given year.
Right.
And you'll spend it in that year. If there's, if there's money left over, that returns to the general fund, but then you'll budget out the number of lights that you're gonna do the next year. That's the kind of process that is, you know, is amenable to treatment as part of a budget.
Well, a project like solar or hybrid charging stations or EV conversions and stuff like that, some of those can come with pretty, you know, high price tags.
Yeah, so if you want to aggregate, yeah, you know, that's it. As I say, I don't know what your projects are and what the spending is. Budget, if you, if you expect a certain amount to come in and a certain amount to go out and they're gonna be pretty well matched and you know what it's gonna be and you're, you know, like eighty, ninety percent certain you're gonna spend it in a given year, to its budget line, that's simplest.
Yeah.
But if you have to aggregate, you know, a number of your spending, then yes, then a special article.
Well, it seems like to characterize it, the budget item seems, if you have regular occurring expense type of money, if you're doing a capital sort of expenditure, it seems like the special article is the way to go.
Yeah, I guess I would say it really is a matter of cash flow. You know, that replacing of streetlights is a capital expenditure. But if you know your adder is going to be twenty-two thousand dollars and you're gonna, and you've decided, you know what? We're gonna just go on and replace three streetlights a year and that's gonna be somewhere between eighteen and twenty-three thousand dollars. Even though that's a capital item, that is amenable to budgetary treatment.
Being predictable.
Yeah, yeah, but so it really depends upon the nature of your cash flow and the nature of your expenditure, that if you can do it on a rolling basis, you know, reasonably given, you know, inputs and outputs in a year, budget. If you need to aggregate things and to accumulate things over multiple years, a special article.
Okay, we're coming up against a timeframe. We have a meeting tomorrow, which I'm not even sure, are you able to make it? Okay, so we do have Coram, I hope.
Yeah.
We can discuss this further, but we want to make sure that our choices are in by the twelfth, so that we're in there, so.
I would suggest that you put in, you know, I mean, if you at all think you're gonna, after what we've talked about tonight, if you'd all think you're gonna do a special article, that you put in a special article and special articles that, you know, should say, you know, to raise purpose.
Just hypothetically, we have one written right now.
All right. Okay.
So I think the sense of when we walked in here is that we were doing a special article, that we heard you out.
Yeah.
We want to run it by you, though, to make sure that it.
Yeah, and again, we will review it even after you submit it, so.
All right, so.
And town council does too.
Okay, so in that case, I won't take up any more meeting time. We'll just submit this as written and take your feedback from there.
All right.
I will email you.
The bullet points of non-performance. I'll put the wrapper around the, for a demand letter and we'll take it from there.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Are you submitting it? Is this, this is it? So they're submitting it?
Yeah. That's it.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Then I think the only thing we have is the annual town report, right? And I, I mean, I thought this was fine for what it contained. I had a couple of things that I wanted to ask you guys about whether you wanted to cover. I thought that the, you know, revival of Berlin Home Day and so on was a notable thing and finding a corporate sponsor for that, and I wondered if we wanted to put in a couple of sentences on that.
Sure.
Okay, and I can give, I can, I can give these to you, I think, barring snow emergency, I'm gonna be meeting with you on Wednesday anyway, Mary, so we can tidy it up. Okay, so that was one. I also thought that maybe we should. I was gonna add something about the fact that we're, I was thinking about adding something about the fact of the electrical issues with the town hall, but I suspect this will be, those will be done before, I hope, before, before this report goes out, so I decided not to do that one. I wondered if maybe four or five sentences on the restructuring of public safety might be good that we've been working, you know, with the inter chief and that we're in the process of, you know, morphing from an all-call department to a hybrid department, you know, addressing issues of coverage and design that would be attended to that. I think that's an important.
Do you think the chief will cover that too?
I hope he will, but I would still like.
I don't think you can cover that enough, frankly.
Yeah, I thought.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, I thought, I thought, again, to put like a, you know, maybe a four or five sentence paragraph in on that if people, but I don't wanna, you know, go off writing that unless people thought that was a, thought that was a good idea. The, I wanted to check to be sure, did we have any other? Because I lose track of these things. Did we have any other special declaration days? I know we did one for Roger Wheeler recently, but I don't know if we did it this year, Mary?
Roger Wheeler?
Yeah.
I don't remember that one, so.
I don't remember.
I thought we had a.
Larry Brant day.
We did Larry.
I know we did Larry Brant day, yes. But I thought we did some.
Another proclamation?
Yeah, basically, my point was, have we done any other similar proclamations? And I want to be sure that we would mention those, and I thought we did one.
There might have been one, but I can't think of what it was.
I thought, I thought it, anyway, I thought we did one on his ninetieth birthday, and I thought this was, it was the previous, yeah, but I may be thinking, it may have been the previous, you know, time flies.
Just obvious.
Time flies even when you're not having fun, but.
John, I mean, I'm not, I'm still booting up a John Geis Duncan, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so can we check to see the other proclamations and if we're putting in one, we should put in the others? Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was there something to do with Hank? No, I don't, no.
No.
No, there was nothing else that I have for that year.
No other?
John Geis was the prior November.
Okay. And nothing else for that year, okay.
Roger Wheeler was in two thousand and fifteen. There you go.
There you go.
I can have to keep an eye on him.
You are.
We do need to time fly.
That's fine, okay, then I think that's fine, just if, all I was thinking when I saw that was whether we had any others. Okay, no, that was it, so I'll add those couple of points and other than that, people are happy with it?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Hyundai won't have its own report.
Huh?
It's not continuing, I suppose, but.
I think it would, I think the hope is that it would go outside of town government. So my thought was to leave the report out.
Yeah, so we'll mention.
Has it officially gone out?
They were actually, the last I had talked to Kristen, they actually had somebody they were looking at to form a nonprofit for it.
Oh.
Continue, they weren't sure if it would be June or October because there was thoughts that October might be a better time of year, but they were pursuing.
I'm sorry, there was one other thing. I was wondering along the lines of the fire department, if we could maybe put four or five sentences about the council on aging and some of the issues that we're facing with that. Is that fair enough? Do you want to take a crack at that?
I can, yeah.
Okay. Again, because those two seem to me to be sort of developing issues that it would be good to get some comments out on.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, so you'll do that, I'll do the others?
Yep.
All right, and because you didn't think of anything, you don't have to do anything. Oh, you're off the hook. All right. Is there any other new business to come before the meeting?
We didn't have the liquor barn on the agenda tonight.
No, I put that off because I had not had a chance to talk to town council about that, so I put that off to next week. But Mary asked me about putting that on the agenda, but.
Yeah, I didn't see an answer.
She reminded me today. Oh, yeah, I thought I had replied to all, but maybe I just replied to her and I said, yeah.
And we, I did see your email.
But we woke it on the agenda for next week and I'll follow that up.
I did see your email about Joe's review too. How do we want to handle that or?
I was gonna just see if we could schedule that maybe after or.
Who's his liaison?
I am.
I would say.
Do you want me to just do the review?
You should just do it.
Okay.
And then, yeah, report to us.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a review of him, talking to him and then come back and report to us? Okay, gotcha.
I can do that.
Haven't done one of these before, so, yeah. And did we get?
Similar to like what you did for Keith and what you did for June, right, just fill out the form?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's fine.
Bring it back and, right. The other thing I was thinking of with the emails going back and forth this week is, are we all set with the police union issue? We're good?
That was on my list too.
I have to, I have to run down Chief Galvin because, yes, I think we're okay in terms of what we're submitting to them, but I have a question out to him, which is to say, is that the only outstanding issue? Have you settled the financial side of it? And I just need to get that answer from him.
Okay.
Because I didn't know what to put in the cover note. Okay?
All right.
But I reviewed that and I said to Chief Galvin, I think, okay, but, and then, but there was also a settlement of that particular event. And I have to go, it's not like him, but I'm pretty sure, I sent him an email this last week about that.
Okay.
And I've checked, I'm pretty sure I sent it, that one did come from my.
I see him Wednesday, so I.
And I'll be here Wednesday too, so.
You'll probably see him before I will then. I see him Wednesday night.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Anything else there?
I did just tuck something in there, which I had sent to you, asking about how you might want to handle Wednesday if it is a snow up.
I was thinking about that, and I was wondering whether we could sort of simplify this policy a good deal by saying that any day that the regional school system cancels school.
Or the Berlin?
Or the Berlin.
Or the Berlin school, yeah. Occasionally, it'll be closed here.
Okay. That people are not required to come into the office and are encouraged to work from home.
Typically, that's not the way that people go because the school will close in a lot of instances where we wouldn't. The most I'd seen for a policy in that direction would be delaying based on the, what the school did. The general policy that I had sent over to Chief Galvin would have been basically working with the emergency management director and the, because we don't have a town administrator, the chair. And those two individuals would make a, make a call.
The emergency management would be.
Which is Chief Z.
Yeah.
And then in lieu of him not being here, it would fall to Chief Galvin.
How about the roads department?
Um, that's not typically the mix, but.
He consults the school superintendent, and they'd probably consult with them, especially since they don't live in town.
They do.
They usually do check with the highway superintendent on the road conditions.
Yeah. But I do have one, I can send you over what I had started and what I sent over to, to Chief Galvin, and he also had not had a chance to look at that yet, so.
Well, I think we'll muddle through Wednesday, the way we did before.
Can you send that to me, too?
Yeah, I can send it to both of you, I just was like waiting, I was waiting for him to give feedback. I went about as simple, I took one of the simplest policies that Mary had sent over.
Yeah, Mary sent them a while ago, didn't you, Mary?
I did.
And I think I tried to leave it unread so I would read it, and then I lost it.
Okay.
Okay, um.
You want all the drafts, or just what Lisa, Lisa said?
Maybe we'll just go with Lisa's.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I don't think I've seen it, but then I don't need to see it if you guys are just working.
Is Chief Z back?
Like I said, I, I just sent it to.
I don't know.
Is Chief Z back?
I haven't seen him.
I don't think so.
I don't think, I didn't think so, but I, I didn't know today.
I can't remember the date that he's back, but I don't think he's back yet.
It's a January date.
So, I mean, do we want to do Wednesday, using that as a preliminary, where Chief Galvin can call me, I will be in Berlin on Wednesday?
Sure.
And by what time are we supposed to make this call? Is there, is that in the policy? Just so I know that.
When is the snow supposed to start this day?
Uh, I actually think it's not supposed to be bad until mid, midday, when I looked at the weather report.
Oh, well, my meeting's on Wednesday in the morning.
Yeah.
So would Chief Galvin then put the email out to everybody?
That was, that was why I hadn't, I wanted to get with him about the notification methods and the various, uh, 'cause when you start actually looking at this, it, it is more complicated than you think it is.
Yeah, that's just one of the reasons why, as I was thinking about it.
They get it, yeah.
If you just ask people to check and see what the schools did, and then do it.
Yeah, and that was, that was my first impulse, too, and, and we had talked about it, and he's, and we were both like, well, yeah, but they closed schools, that's sort of the drop of a hat, um, and not everybody.
I don't know, there are a couple times we closed here that school didn't close. Anyway.
Yeah.
All right.
So I will direct people to.
Just wait for the message. I don't know.
Uh, Mary, what time practically do you, do you, would it be helpful to, for people to know?
Okay, so, yes, the time was in here, town office employees are required to obtain information regarding delays or closure of offices after 7:00 AM.
After 7:00 AM.
Yeah. Um, but like I said, this was all preliminary, and we needed to figure out whether there was gonna be a message.
Practically speaking, Mary, what is, is it seven, or is it eight, or what, do you think?
Some towns close midday because a town administrator makes a determination that it's.
Oh, no, no, I understand that, I meant what time.
Do people need to know here to not open in the morning?
You get to send, yes.
I, I would get, you know, Dennis and the building inspector come in before 7:00. Most departments count.
Dennis doesn't report to us, Dennis can come in whenever the hell he wants.
The building inspector tends to get here before 7:00, from an hour commute away, so he's someone, for example, I think he might be the farthest flung of the selectmen-appointed employees, who would have to know the earliest. I think the last storm, he was texting me on the, after our Thursday closure, on a Friday morning, I think he was texting me at 6:30 in the morning.
Ooh.
But the other wrinkle is that unless the selectmen want to order otherwise, town employees do not monitor, even though they can with Gmail, their email remotely, so he asked me to communicate the board's wishes to him by text. So it'd be better if the board said, you shall check your email to find this out, because we don't have everyone's cell phone numbers, and.
Yeah, but, um, I can also, like I said, Chief Galvin seemed to think he had a way to let everybody know if town offices needed to be closed, so we probably don't even want to like.
No, I mean, I could, if I'm the one making the call, I can also text Joe, because he's on my phone, so, you know, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um, I don't think early in the morning is going to be an issue.
This storm.
This, for this storm.
Right.
Um, so, um, I, I'm gonna make an executive decision right now, that we're gonna have the offices open, that if weather conditions deteriorate, that employees can use their judgment with them, with an eye toward their safety if they leave early and want to work the rest of the day from home, okay?
Okay.
And that's what the message should be?
That's the message, that you put it out right now, for Wednesday.
So.
That's not a policy, but that's the message for Wednesday.
So what I think I did the last storm, or I was asking if you wanted me to do that, is while I'm telling that to the selectmen-appointed org trade, copying the other departments, that they could just be advised of what the.
You can copy the others.
Yeah, okay.[1573.81]